Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want us, we're using microphones and. Somebody who's got their microphone. All right, I'll say. So I want to welcome everyone to New Report Zoning Board of Appeals for this evening's zoning agenda, which is the twenty-fourth of January, two thousand and twenty-three. As you can see, we, we forgot our name tag, so we did it the old timey way. I don't know if you can see it or not, but I'm going to introduce myself and everyone else. We're going to use microphones so that those that are logged on, because we still conduct a hybrid meeting, um, so that those who are logged on can also report us. Uh, this isn't necessarily going to amplify my voice or anyone's voice. So you see, I pick up mics for that purpose. Um, when anyone who does wish to speak, and I'll go through quickly just the opening of the meeting. Uh, we ask that you just kindly step up to the podium and adjust the mic as needed, and everything else will be picked up via the owl system. And I monitor here as well as, um, as well as Caitlin Sullivan and, uh, and, uh, everyone else who might be logged on. We have one member, Mr. Ken Swan, who's joining us remote. I believe you can see him. So allow me to open this evening's meeting and introduce myself. My name is Ralph Chanpetty. I'm the chairman of the zoning board. Um, I'm going to just introduce members of the board. We'll take a roll call, establish a quorum, I'll go through the quick, um, process and flow, and then we'll get right into the public hearings. We'll take first the, um, request for continuances to the extent there are any requests for continuances. We'll go ahead and do that first, and then we will get into the first order of business so that no one has to, uh, no one has to wait. So, uh, starting with, uh, with our, uh, members of the ZBA that are here this evening. To my immediate left, we have Mr. Stephen Delisle, vice chair. To his left, and if Gregory Bennet, a member. Uh, we have Mr. Walter Bud Shannon to his left, and to, uh, to Mr. Shannon's media left, uh, Ms. Patricia Pecking, our voting. And then we have online joining us, um, Ken Swan. And, uh, I'm going to just quickly take a roll and ask members of the ZBA to respond, uh, here or present. Mr. Steve Delisle, here. Mr. Gregory Bennet, here. Mr. Walter Bud Shannon, here. Mr. Ken Swan, here. Thank you, Ken. Uh, Ms. Patricia Peck, here. And Ralph Chanpetty on here. We have one, two, three, four, five, six in attendance. We do have a quorum. Uh, for purposes of this evening, uh, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennet, Mr. Shannon, uh, and, uh, Mr. Swan. And Ms. Peck is our alternate and will deliberate and participate uh, and vote on any matter where one of the members has to refuse themselves or remove themselves to a company. Uh, so with that having established our quorum, I'll just lay out quickly for those of you that might not have attended the ZBA hearing before. Because it's hybrid, uh, we will go through the flow of everything, uh, in terms of our sequence, and I'll run you through what that looks like. Uh, we, when we go public comments, uh, we will always hear from those that are in the room first uh, and then address anyone who might raise their hand virtually as well. We try to give reference to who is actually in the room. So, uh, the way the flow of the ZBA works, we operate by a modified Robert School's order. Uh, we start by reading the, uh, the public notice. The public notice would have gone out to any butter and been published in the Daily News. Uh, we read that and just for sort of like, you know, kind of the Latin language, um, we will read the technical application, what the applicant's, uh, name is. There, if they're represented by, uh, by any party that would be presenting, and the relief being sought, whether it's a special permit variance, and then a descriptor, a brief sort of, uh, a brief phrase describing exactly in just regular language what the applicant seeks to, you know, extend and, uh, and, uh, you know, to extend a rear porch or to add X number of square feet or what have. So, uh, once we read the public notice, I'll then turn the floor over to the applicant, with the applicant's, um, representative to stand in a certain way, on as comfortable and take a podium and present the application. Uh, once the application's presented, uh, we close that portion of the public hearing. I then go to public comments. Uh, public comment, we ask everyone to kindly, um, govern, um, yourself sportingly and courteously with respect at the time of law, and we ask everyone to kindly stay within two minutes or so. I, I have discretion and I almost always exercise granting that as needed so that folks can, you know, finish thoughts and sort of get to the, uh, the end of their intended comments. The spirit of this meeting and all meetings is to hear people out and to allow everyone to sort of speak their mind and, uh, allow the board members to hear their comments and thoughts with respect to the application. When we hear from public comment, um, and so to that point, I'll always give fair warning to say, you know, um, maybe kindly wrap, wrap up or thirty more seconds. Uh, we rarely have ever had the, you know, circumstance where you had to, you know, like wrangle someone from the podium or something like that. But we try to be in full disclosure as open and as, uh, as, uh, sort of full, you know, sort of full information, um, available as possible. So we will, you know, just ask you to just govern yourselves, uh, as, uh, as you see fit when you come off of public comment. When we go to public comment, don't feel like you've come down in the pro or con cult. Just simply speak your mind, whether you're for or against, you're welcome to say that. You don't have to. There is no special, you know, side of the group or pro or con. Uh, just simply, uh, give your full name for our keeper of the record, uh, this Gretchen Joy, who's seated all the way in my far right and who has the unenviable task of having to write down everything we all say, uh, or typing it. So kindly give your name, uh, and your address, and then just share your thoughts. Uh, once we go through the room, I'll call everyone that's here. Anyone who wishes to speak, if you're recognized, just kind of raise your hand and, and we'll recognize you. I'll invite you to take the podium. Then once, um, we're through all of the heads in the room, uh, I'll go to any virtual hands that are online and do the same thing. Uh, and then once we are completely, uh, vetted on any public comment, we close that portion of the public hearing, at which point we go to questions from the board. Questions from the board is simply the base of the zoning board hearing when members of the ZBA, uh, in sequence will, you know, ask questions that may have come up, uh, during public comments, uh, that have, you know, been in their minds as a result of presentation. I'll say this too with respect to public comment. Um, for those that have done this before, this is probably familiar. Uh, with respect to public comment, if you pose your comment in the form of a question, please note that we mean you no disrespect or discourtesy if we don't directly respond to that question with an answer. You may pose your comments in the form of a question, know well that, uh, as part of the, uh, the process and procedure, we won't be able to address that question directly, but, but rest assured, that question will be written down by one or more of the members of the ZBA, and you will very, very well, uh, expect to hear that question in some form or another by a member of the ZBA during the questions from Z, uh, from members, uh, portion. So, uh, don't fret if you pose a question and you don't get an answer. That's, uh, that's certainly no discouragement. That's just the process. Uh, once we go through questions from the board, every member has questions, and we have additional questions of the applicant, uh, of the applicant representatives. We'll then close that portion of the public hearing, and we will go into deliberations. Liberations is the format of this hearing when, um, everyone gets to simply listen to members of the ZBA, um, discuss the matters, pros and cons, strengths and weaknesses out loud. It's, it's essentially a, uh, public hearing eavesdropping exercise that is full disclosure. You get to listen to that discussion. I will, uh, just as a sense of going through things orderly, I'll go through each one member of the ZBA and invite, uh, their deliberations on whether the applicant's application meets the criteria. If so, why? If no, not why not? Any issues or, or debate fight between us? You get to hear it both in, in sort of, you know, full, uh, exposure. As we go through each of that deliberations, um, uh, comments from members. Um, if there are any additional questions, we can simply circle back and ask that question uh, and then return to deliberations. Once deliberations are completed, um, and every member of the ZBA has some at their, their time, I will then invite a motion to approve. The way the Roberts Rules Board will, will govern this, you will hear a member of the ZBA making a motion to approve the application. Uh, please know that that doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, that, that member, um, plans to vote in support of the application or supports the application, but merely procedurally is placing that motion upon the board to be voted upon, and it's always presented in the affirmative. So it's always a motion to approve the application. Once that's made, a second is gathered, and I'll invite a second. The motion's made and seconded, we'll then call the roll. In order for the application to be successful, at least four members of the ZBA must vote affirmative. Um, so we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, um, five of us voting this evening. We have an alternate. So that means, right, right, that, right? One, two, three, yes. So that means that, um, at least four of the five net voting members of the ZBA have to vote affirmative uh, for the motion to carry. The motion carries, the application's approved. Then it's as simple as that. So, um, I always try to lay that out just so everyone understands what we're in for. And with that, um, I will, uh, open up the public hearings, and we'll begin by just addressing the two matters that are before us where we have received requests for continuations. Uh, the first is Diane Hanley and Michael Dow, care of Lisa Mead Town and Costa LLC. The application is for thirty-four, ten street. It's continued from January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's an application for a special permit for non-conformities. Um, and without opening up it, opening the application any further. Attorney me, if you wish, just take a vote, if you wish to be heard.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, so on that, members of the ZBA, we have, uh, the applicant's request to continue the matter. We have two fourteen and we have two twenty-eight both available. Do you have a preference? We do have a rule on the next hearing. We have three now, one we expect to, uh, be further continued, so we have only two off.
Two fourteen.
That's two fourteen, very good. So the applicant's request is to continue the matter to February fourteenth, Valentine's Day. Um, any, uh, any comments by members of the board, uh, on that request? And if not, we have a motion to continue.
I, I will move that CNC dash point two dash thirty-three application for thirty-four, ten street. The question is, uh, the question is going to be granted to the February fourteenth.
Very good. We have a second. I'll say, so thank you very much. It's been by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Delisle, um, calling the roll. Uh, the motion continues to two fourteen, Mr. Delisle. Yes, Mr. Bennet?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair? Yes. Inspector?
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Officer, if any of them guess that is six, me affirmative. Uh, the ice haven motion carrying, matter continued to two fourteen. Uh, the next matter is a, and I will take this now just in case there was anyone here to speak in connection with it. This is, um, from our business meeting. It's a request for a minor modification, uh, one, ten street. Um, I don't believe we have anyone here from that application, and I don't see any hands. Uh, this is a, uh, this is the signed application for one, ten street, the gas station of property, ten street. Um, they have requested the continuation to March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, any comments from members of the ZBA? Yes.
I'd like to suggest that it does not appear to be a minor modification. If we vote on whether or not it is.
So, um, whether it's minor or not minor, and it's, it is modification, it's an initial to correct, is an initial threshold determination by our zoning votes enforcement commissioner. So, um, this plan shade would have made that initial call. Um, we can certainly revisit it, uh, and, you know, ask her to read this whether it's that criteria rises to the next level. But for now, what we have is that determination. And so, um, I would want us to just focus on the, uh, the continuance. And then while it's in continuance, if there's a revisitation, that's certainly a conversation that we can be happy. And, uh, you know, what, what I, I, we're all as members, uh, as, as well as the applicant themselves are entitled to sort of, you know, an explanation as to what, you know, what criteria was, was that? Whether it's, whether it rises to a higher level. Your, your, your concern is whether it, it's a major modification requiring full notice to a buyer's.
I was wondering about that, yeah.
Fair enough. Um, okay, any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Peck. Uh, we have a motion to approve the request for continuance, three twenty-eight on one, ten street.
I think a motion to approve the continuance for one, ten street, ten, uh, dash two, two, dash two, seven, two, March twenty-eight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle. We'll be on second. I'll second it. Mr. Bennet, the motion is made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Shannon, calling the roll. Motion to continue to three twenty-eight, twenty-three, Mr. Delisle. Yes, Mr. Bennet?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
And Ms. Peck?
Yes.
Officer, if any of them guess, and six, the affirmative, by the amount of motion carries, and that matter is continued. Attorney me, did you?
Uh, we've just been told that there is a portion of the parking lot has their lights. Or doesn't seem to be anybody's here. Uh, maybe it's somebody's up there.
Yeah, I know.
No, I know.
Uh, next one, you make it. Yeah, really? I, 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 I don't know this. Thank you. Is that you? Very good. All right, so we're going to take a, take a moment, um, and then we're going to, we're going to get right into, uh, first application, which will be New Report Renovations LLC, five Oak Street. They'll do that as soon, as soon as, uh, Mr. Bennet can turn. Is it a good time to take a water break or a quick rest or break? If you like it. And now that we're all settled back in, um, we're going to, uh, open our public hearings with the first application this evening. This is the matter of New Report Renovations LLC, care of Lisa Mead Town and Costa LLC for the, uh, property address of five Oak Street, a continuation from January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the applicant seeks all a, a special permit for non-conformities, um, to remove an existing rear compound from the single-family structure. It instructs in addition, greater than five hundred square feet to the rear of the structure that extends to the right side yard, the right yard setback. Attorney me?
Thank you, sir, Chair, members of the board this evening. Um, Lisa Mead Mead Town and Costa thirty-three street, new report, uh, for the record. And looking here this evening is, uh, George Hazelstein of New Report Renovations LLC, Miss Samya, um, who is the architect on the project as well. Um, as the chair indicated, this is a request for a modification to a pre-existing non-conforming structure um, by the removal of a small addition in the back and construction of a new addition in the back and the removal of a garage and reconstruction of a garage in the rear of the property. You go to the next slide, please. So the property is located, um, in the R two zoning district and the DCOD overlay district. It was constructed in or around eighteen fifty, according to the assessors' records and the district data sheets say, um, the same thing, but the Form B says around eighteen forty-six. Uh, the property is listed as contributory to the district. However, the applicant is removing less than twenty-five percent of the, um, exterior walls, and so the DCOD is not, um, triggered. The property has existing non-conformities for a lot area with seven thousand one hundred seventeen square feet, where ten thousand square feet are required for a single-family home. There's forty-eight point ninety-two feet of frontage where ninety is required. Front yard setback with six point three, where twenty-five is required. And the right side setback is four point four, where ten is required. The proposal does add more than five hundred square feet to the house, and so we are here because the property has less than the required frontage, um, and area. So if you go to the next slide, please. So, um, if you've ever driven down Oak Street, you might notice this house, it's got a really nice, long, deep lot. Um, the house has some interesting siding on it, which has already been removed and is going to be replaced, interesting meaning not safe. Um, but, so, George, come on that right away. So this is a front view of it from Oak Street. Go to the next slide, please. And here is a side view, and that's the left-hand side. Next slide, please. And this is that rear addition that was later added in the back that's going to be removed. Next slide, please. And there's another shot of that addition. Next slide, please. Uh, here's the house recently. You can see the siding has been removed, but we wanted to show you the right side, a little more context in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And you can see how deep this, um, yard is in the back. Next slide, please. And here's a view down, uh, traveling, um, east on, um, uh, Oak Street, and you can see it on the left-hand side. Next slide, please. And again, it's a little further away. Um, and the addition's going to be in the back, and we'll show that in a minute. Next slide, please. And this is on the, um, traveling the opposite way on West Hurley, on Oak Street. Next slide, please. So, um, as I noted, the applicant is proposing to remove the existing one-story bump out in the rear, um, and construct a new addition, um, which will have a two-story and a one-story portion. The second story will be smaller than the first floor. The addition will extend the existing right side setback. Um, you might recall earlier, I said the right side setback is four point four. That's going to be extended, but not, um, at the same four point four. It actually moves in a little bit from the rear of the house. Um, the, um, as a result, the applicant requires the, uh, special permit for the extension of that right side setback. Otherwise, the, um, addition meets the setback requirements for the rear and the left side. Um, also, there is a garage that's going to be proposed to be constructed in the rear. The garage meets the setback requirements for an accessory structure at seven feet off each the rear and side lot lines, and it is, um, within the requirements, size, uh, requirements for an accessory structure, at twenty-one and a half by twenty-three and a half square feet and fourteen feet eleven inches tall for the mean. You go to the next slide, please. So here's a, um, the site plan. I don't know, Caitlin, if you can just blow that up a little bit, it might be easier to see. So you can see in kind of the beige-ish, um, color, the addition on the rear um, that steps in and then has like a little, um, entry mudroom on the back. I'll let, uh, Samya's go over that. Um, but you can see we've removed that one car garage that kind of blocks the rear. Um, and it opens up, which we'll show you, um, in a little bit. It opens up that view to the rear, and so that's the, the new garage is going to be all the way at the back of the property. So with that, I'm going to, um, let, uh, Samya over, uh, review the architectural plans.
Good evening. My name is Samia Tumine. I'm, uh, the owner of, uh, this convention park design. So this is the first slide showing exist, the two existing elevation at the, the top of the page, and you'll see the two poles elevation right below them. So if you can start by the front elevation, um, you can see that on the existing, we're, uh, moving the windows that are in the middle and realigning them with the ridge. And we're also modifying the chimney, um, and removing and replacing the chimney to create a new chimney with a little more interest in the brick detail. Um, that you can see on the bottom elevation, you can also see the long window, the two windows. And we decided to, to add the addition towards the back of that property to make sure to maintain the street, streetscape as well as could and preserve the existing building as well as we could. So the only ex, the wall that is really affected by that addition is the one, um, to the rear of existing building. Um, we are going to, uh, remove the addition on the back. You can see on the second, uh, we should know that. Um, so that addition will be removed and replaced by the new, um, expanded addition. Um, we also are going to update a little bit the trim detail on the property. Based on the neighborhood, this, this property itself seems a little plain considering the, the year and, yeah, the style of the neighborhood. So by adding a little bit of, of extra detail, simply by adding a crown to boost the rate, and also reworking the front portico, which, uh, has some very, um, interesting proportion, I guess, uh, that we will kind of work that into the crown of that, um, front, uh, entryway. Uh, we are also removing the two side, existing side light and adding two side light that would match the style of the door. And, um, if you want to go to the next slide. We are going to add one window, um, on the left elevation at the top. And again, you can see the area that we're removing on the back, um, of the existing. And, uh, we're adding few elevation, um, two, uh, windows of the back in, um, we have the back elevation. Uh, we are also removing the, well, yeah, like you saw, we're removing the siding, and we're proposing to add five inches exposure, flat wood flower to, um, reface the existing property and the addition. We are also going to add a freeze board at the top of the window, which you can see, um, at the, um, on the side elevations. And for the garage, if you want, I'm going to the next slide. The, the garage, um, the proposed garage, um, will carry the same type of utility as the existing property and the, the addition. So we will, you know, shutters and, um, proper hardware and shutters and, uh, crown molding and very simple casing, less casing as is. We're just going to replace them in time and keep the same type of casing, uh, for the existing property and the garage.
So, um, with that, you can put in the next slide, please. Um, the criteria for non-conformities under section nine is one that we know, the addition of a new non-conformity. And in this instance, there is no new addition of a new non-conformity. We're actually removing the, uh, non-conformity that was created by the existing garage um, and then extending the, um, non-conformity on the right-hand side. Even though it's bumped in a little bit, it will still be extended to the rear of the yard, but we are not creating any new non-conformities. Uh, next, the board needs to find that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Here, uh, we believe the proposed addition appears the dimensional requirements, um, as we noted, um, apart from the, the extension on the right-hand side um, and stylistically fits in with the architecture, um, of the main portion of the house. In addition, the main portion of the house is getting an important facelift, if you will. Um, and, you know, the new siding and the new front door, the sidelines and whatnot. So we think that it actually is an improvement rather than being substantially more detrimental. Uh, while the applicant is removing that later added rear bump out, it was a part in the original structure, and the new addition is subordinate to the, um, existing historic structure. And as I noted earlier, is stepped in from the existing structure so you can differentiate the new from the old. Uh, obviously, the remaining, the use remains to be a single-family home. Um, and if you consider the entirety of the project, as I said earlier, we're removing a non-conformity and opening up that driveway you into the backyard, um, that it has a significantly deep backyard, which is really nice to see as you walk down the street without the existing one-part garage. The scale of the addition is also in keeping, uh, with the property and with the neighborhood. It's certainly not too large. Um, the resulting square footage is about twenty-two hundred square feet. So, um, that is certainly in conform, you know, consistent with the other homes on Oak Street. And if you could go to the next slide. Except that's the last thing. Okay, that's, um, also, um, I had mentioned earlier, we have some additions. The other additions that went on Oak Street similarly were in the rear, the back, so that they didn't interfere with the, the streetscape. Um, the windows are wood aluminum clad windows, um, with, um, uh, simulated divided light. Um, the pavers, um, on the walkway are going to be replaced. It will be the Boston City pavers that will be used. Um, and all of the roof runoff will be, uh, treated underground in an infiltration system, so they won't, they won't be she, uh, there won't be sheet flow across the property. Um, I also provided six letters of support, um, to the board. Those are all of the eventing properties, um, and, uh, almost all the eventing properties. I think there's one in the very rear, um, that has supported but wasn't able to get a letter in, uh, and then the neighbors across the street as well. Um, with that, we think that the board can find that the proposals are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and approve the special permit.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Attorney me.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, if there's anything else in the presentation?
That's it.
Okay. Great. Uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Thank you, uh, for the presentation. Uh, we'll now open up public comment, and I'll just ask, uh, Caitlin to put up our public comment slide to remind everyone to, uh, uh, just try to keep comments within two minutes if you can. Uh, and, uh, we'll start with the room. Anyone wish to speak in connection with the application? Pro, con, or just comments? Raise your hand. Seeing none, going once, going twice. Well, we will. Going once, going twice. We will take a look online. Do we have anyone in attendees that wish to be heard? Just kindly raise your hand. And we will recognize you, open your mic, and you will have a floor. Seeing no hands online. I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go right into questions from the board. We'll begin her by with Mr. Y.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have any questions regarding the proposal, the substance of the proposal itself. I had an architectural question. With respect to the windows shown in the, in the architectural drawings, two six over one. I was wondering if that's what, if that was what actually is going in or if that was just a placeholder. And if so, why did you choose six over one? Curious.
Well, that's what we're proposing. And the reason why is because this six over six is a, is a very busy window. And it just, with the simple city of the house, it seems like it was a little overdone with the six over six.
Okay, yeah, okay. I was just curious because it seemed that the, the six over one was a more modern window than, than the house to me. That's my, that's my only question.
So the proposal is six over one?
Yeah. Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, just another question on the windows. I, I take it all of the windows, the windows in the existing structure are being replaced as well.
That, that's correct. They're being replaced as proposed on the plans.
Gotcha. Okay. And you told us the size of the house was these improvements, about twenty-two hundred square feet. Turn me, what, which is a modest size. What, what is the total of that size of the improvement?
Sure. The total size of the improvement is nine hundred and forty-nine square feet. But then the net of that, because the removal of that addition is eight hundred and fifty-one. So the existing is thirteen fifty-eight.
And right by, but so just comment and help me. I don't know if you have any data to support the notion of the size and scale of this is probably to the neighborhood. He's giving me some assistance and I gave that finding.
Sure. So I, I don't, we certainly didn't do a comparison to every house in the neighborhood. I can tell you that you just approved an addition. We didn't put a my max on here. I would have been able to show you this. You, you just approved an addition next door, which would have taken that house. I think that goes up to about twenty-two or twenty-five. And then the, there's houses on Marlboro Street that back up to this, right? So those are fairly large. The houses directly across the street are three set. Yeah. One is thirty-six hundred and one is forty-one hundred and ten and twelve Oak Street. So there's a streetscape. So you can see generally the massing of houses. Then the, so you can see the one at seven Oak Street, right next door, has that, is the large house that has the small addition on the back.
Hey, Mr. Chen. Yeah, I, I have one question. The little portico. Doorway in the front.
Sure.
It appears to project out from the building when you look at it, albeit small. But it's not shown on the drawing that it's having any forward projection. The only reason I'm asking is this front yard setback, I think is six point three feet right now on the left corner. So I'm asking, is there anything going to be done to the portico that would extend it closer to the street? Or staying exactly correct?
And stay exactly the same.
So it's being updated, just a little bit up there or it's not?
That's, that's right.
No, because if you push it a foot forward.
No, 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 no.
Okay, right. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, the similar question to Mr. Law with the six over one of the shutters, because to me that's busier. But can you clarify window to remain? Does it mean windows on the left elevation or that window? That window, it says window to remain.
The opening, that opening to remain, so you might recall, there was a proposal that came in for the January tenth meeting. And we had a couple of modifications to it. Originally, that window was going to be removed. Okay, okay. And so that's why that went back on there. But you can see on the lower elevation, that window is there. That opening is still there.
And then it says windows to be centered on gable end. And I think the architect said that means aligned with a chimney, but I don't see.
No, with the peak, the ridge.
And then the chimney being rebuilt.
Correct, yeah, correct. But so you can see on the top elevation is that the center windows are actually a little off to the left. They're not aligned with the ridge. And so they're just being aligned with the bridge. So they're more symmetrical. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
All right. And Mr. Slugg?
Uh, yeah, this is quite an experience, by the way, dialing in from home. Having not done this for a while, but I am getting over a bad cold. I did not want to spread my germs around you guys. But anyway, everybody asked my questions except for one, which is attorney me, you mentioned that the addition on the back is set in a little from the four point four feet that you're currently running down the lot line there, which I think is great, but how much is it set in?
So I think if you go to the site plan. So if you go to the site plan, our text says it's either a foot or a foot and a half. I, I don't have that right off the top of my head, but you can see it on the site plan.
I, I couldn't though. I mean, there's no number there.
George is saying it's twelve inches, Mr. Swan.
All right. Thank you. That's my only question. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Swan. I don't have any additional questions that have already been asked and answered. Any members of the CBA or certainly back with any further question? All right. So you know, takers, we will close that portion of the public hearing and move into deliberations. And as the members know, this is a special permit for non-conformity. So there's two elements that are part of our findings or grant a special permit. Board must find that there will be no, there will be no addition of a new non-conformities. And secondly, that there will not, that the application will not be substantially more detrimental than, than the neighborhood, to the neighborhood that existing, pre-existing non-conforming user structure, and that's section ninety-two. So accounting for that sort of structure and deliberation, Mr. Glott, would you pick things up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly no new non-conformity here. And I think that the proposal is not going to be substantially more detrimental than to the neighborhood than what exists currently. I can support this. I, I don't really like the six over one with the window. I think that that's kind of, kind of mixed up a little bit. But otherwise, I, I can support this project. I think it actually is a really nice project. I think from a massing perspective, I think getting, taking that, the garage on the left and pulling that down to allow you to see back into the backyard is a, is a good, is a good point. Putting the garage in back, that really makes it a slimmer design. So I, I can support this project. I think it's a nice project.
Thank you, Mr. Lott. Mr. Bennett?
I endorse. People will ask comments. I would also say the ar, the architecture is faithful to the, to the existing structure. The structure certainly is down on the heels. And these improvements, I think, certainly add to the, the neighborhood and, and city as a whole. And the removal of the garage, the way it's set back. It's been possible. So we're almost.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Chen? Yes, I have to agree with the rest of the board. I think it's a house that is in need of care and updating. It was looking a little tattered and worn there. It's a nice job designing the, the addition without creating a non-conformity. So well done. I like the style and I also like the style of design. I think it is in keeping with the scale, massing and architecture of the neighborhood. And certainly not in what differentiates it to the neighborhood. I think it's, kudos to that. So I can support it.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett will go to you next.
I'll echo what Mr. Glial said.
Very good. Mr. Swanton, you want to get the back cleanup?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Al's been said, and I would only add that I think it's, I do like the fact that you set in the addition on the back from the four point four feet, it by the additional foot. So for all those reasons, I can support this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Swan. I, I agree with what everyone said and I, I'll just echo that. It's always nice to see sort of thoughtful adaptive reuse when this happens. You know, it's a way to see the structure sort of carried forward in the next, you know, fifty-plus years or more. But thoughtful, and I believe Mr. Bennett said, faithful attention to the architectural heritage of a neighborhood and the architectural heritage of a style that's being adaptively restored and reused. I think that's always great. The applicant did a nice job with this. So I too can support it. Any further deliberations before we close? Seeing none, I will close the deliberations portion. And with that, I will invite a member to make a motion.
Have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the application for special permit for non-conformities for five Oak Street, C N C twenty-two dash thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Lott. Motion's made. We have second. Oh, second. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Motion's made by Mr. Lott and seconded by Mr. Bennett on the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities. Calling the role, Mr. Lott. Yes, Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Swan.
Yes.
And well, I'm sure many of you guessed it's five to be affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next application that we have before us. This is the application of Peter Brandt and Leah Hayes, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talib and Inca. The application address five Gloria Street. This is a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits to construct a two-story addition to the rear and right side of the single-family structure located at five Gloria Street and expansion of the existing rear elevated deck. Now with that, attorney, you have a floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board for the reference to Mead, Mead Talib and Inca thirty-three street. With me this evening is Peter Brandt and Leah Hayes. Your spouse is at home with the kids and I think she's on, but I'm not fully sure. Also, I think the designer on the project, Finn Gay, is also on, and so we may be calling for him as well. As the chair indicated, this project is at five Gloria Street on Plum Island. Peter and Leah are proposing to construct a two-story addition to the rear and right side of the single-family structure. And therefore, by expanding their risk and also expanding the rear elevated deck. They will be removing the existing detached shed and greenhouse on the property. And therefore, this requires a special permit for non-conformities. If you can go to the first slide, please. So this is located in the R three in Plum Island Overlay District. Interestingly, the structure was built around nineteen hundred, but in nineteen ninety-six underwent significant renovations. And little if any of the existing cottage, if you will, on remains. But because the structure is more than seventy-five years old, we did need to go to the Historic Commission. The Historic Commission voted that this structure was not historically significant and therefore was not subject to demolition delay. I would add one other thing, and we're going to talk about this in a little bit. But so the assessor's card indicates that there are two bedrooms on this property. Really, there's one bedroom on the property. The other room that is indicated as a bedroom is at the ground level. And there's a door directly from the outside into the room. So there will continue to be only technically two bedrooms on the property. If there's an issue with the board on that, we can talk about any kind of restriction. But there will be, that bed, that room will not be used as a bedroom. Only the new bedroom that's being created. So it will be two bedrooms in the end. So we can talk about that. I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. So the property is non-conforming, not surprising for a lot on Plum Island. For lot area, frontage, front yard setback, left side setback, and F A R. The lot area is forty-nine hundred square feet, where twelve thousand is the minimum, seventy feet of frontage, where a hundred and twenty feet is required. There's a three and a half foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required. A three and a half foot left side setback where twenty feet is required. And the F A R point two eight, where point two five is the maximum allowed. The property is being improved by just about five hundred square feet. It will remain conforming for rear yard setback, right yard setback. And importantly, I think, as we talk about this, open space and also lot coverage, building height and parking will all be in conformity. If you could go to the next slide, please. So I don't know how many of you drive by. I think a lot of you actually drive by these properties these days. But this is actually located on a knoll on Plum Island. So if you go down Oak Point Road. This is on Gloria Street. So you would turn right onto Gloria Street off of Oak Point Road and drive up a little bit of a hill. So you can see it. And that's the property sitting on the left-hand side of Gloria Street there. If you were to pass the property, it goes down again towards the basin. But it is on kind of the hill, and I think that's important for our discussion in a little bit. Next slide, please. So here's the rear, rear view of the property. Next slide, please. And this is the front view on Gloria Street. And you can see why the Historic Commission made its determination. It did. Next slide, please. And this is the very front view on Gloria Street. Next slide, please. And this is kind of the side and front view with parking. You'll see that shed building that's going to be removed as part of this proposal. And you see the door on the bottom left-hand side by the driveway. That's that door that goes into that bottom room. Next slide, please. It's all right. This is the rear, the other side. I thought it was the right side. So this is the rear of the property. Next slide, please. And again, this is the left-hand side. So next slide, please. So the expansion of the home, as I said earlier, is fully within the setbacks on where it's being proposed. What's actually being expanded on non-conformities is the depth, because it's taller, it's higher than thirty inches. You might recall, there was a zoning change a year or so ago, where if there was a depth that was taller than thirty inches, it would have to meet the dimensional requirements. And so right now, there's a non-conformity dimensional requirement. And while the addition itself is fully conforming, the deck extends a current non-conformity, which we'll talk about on the site plan momentarily. The, the building itself meets the, does not extend or exacerbate or create any new non-conformities itself. Also, I think that what's important here is that the lot coverage will continue to be well under the maximum of twenty percent at fifteen point one percent. This is a very condensed proposal. And the open space will continue to be well above the minimum at seventy-two point eight percent or thirty-five percent is required. So the designer and Peter and Leah have worked very hard to make sure that this stays as compact as possible and doesn't sprawl out all over the property. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here you can see the site plan. It'd be great if you could just blow that up a little bit. So you can see the existing structure on the front. And the, you see the, the proposed addition in the kind of beige-ish color. And then you can see the, the wraparound deck that gets extended. And so the non-conformity is on the left-hand side of this, left-hand setback. But otherwise, it meets the, the requirements for the ordinance. So the addition itself is tucked up right against the existing structure. We are also seeking a modification to the F A R. The F A R is currently at twenty-eight, as I said earlier. And it's proposing to go to thirty, thirty-three, I believe. I just want to make sure I have that number wrapped. I believe it's thirty-three. And the existing house is one thousand two hundred and two square feet. And the proposed house will be one thousand six hundred and fifty-six square feet. So there's not a huge addition happening here. It's again, they've tried to be very modest and be, try to get the living space they need for their family without going well over and violating or making it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And yes, the F A R goes way too late. And yes, the F A R goes way too late to point three-three. So um if you could go to the next slide, please. So here are the architectural drawings, so we have the um street facing view. Um excuse me, this is the west side view, um which is the left side of the house and you can see the addition. On the left elevation here, um which kind of fills in that back corner. Uh next slide, please. And here is the uh north-facing view, uh which is the back of the house. And again, you can see where the addition is placed over the existing deck essentially. On that um right-hand drawing, you can see the existing depth. Um and on the left-hand drawing, you can see where the addition goes. Next slide, please. And this is the east-facing uh draw, the east-facing side, which is the right side. And so again, you can see the addition being tucked right up against the house. And the next slide, please. And this is the front of the house facing Gloria Street and you can see the addition on the, on the right-hand side, which is at the back rear of the structure. And I'm sure Peter and Leah are sad to see that chimney go on the front side of Gloria Street there. Um because this is difficult to read, um the um Venus um did some rendering, some models. And so I'm going to show you those because I think it's helpful in your decision. If you go to the next slide, please. So here you see this model of the addition on the house. You can see the existing structure and how the addition is tucked up against the existing structure. And in the footprint, essentially, it's a little bit bigger than the footprint of the original deck, but it's in the same location. Next slide, please. And there you can see it um from the rear view. Next slide, please. And that's the opposite side, so um you can see how the deck comes around um on the house, which um exacerbates. Or extends, excuse me, that right side, next slide. So under section nine G four A of the zoning ordinance. Um the standard here is whether or not the proposed. Is substantially more detrimental to the pie odd and or to the neighborhood. And we believe that the proposed new structure is not substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood for the pie odd. Uh there are no new non-conformities being created by the proposal. Uh the new addition itself creates no new non-conformities, is entirely within the dimensional requirements. Uh but for obviously the F A R. Uh the extension of the side yard non-conformity is due to the extension of the existing elevated deck, not because of the addition itself. And while there is a slight increase in the F A R, um we believe that is not substantially more detrimental to the pie odd for a number of reasons. Uh first of all, the addition is being constructed in conformance with FEMA standards and is elevated. Indeed, we are removing the the outbuildings, the this kind of a co-operation of outbuildings, which of course are not built in according to FEMA standards. And do not allow for the movement of sand or water or air, whereas those are being moved. And removed and the new structure is being built on pilings, which will in fact allow that all to occur. Here, while you all know that there is certainly concern about overdevelopment on Plum Island. I think that uh you need to take each application in its own context, they base it on its location. Uh and certainly they are different. As I pointed out earlier. The uh unique aspect of this particular application is that it is on one of the highest points of Plum Island. On one of the least developed areas of Plum Island. And it's being built, as I indicated also, um on pilings. And so we believe that. The modest extension is not a substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. You can go to the next slide, please. Um so if you, uh actually, if you go to the uh my maps, Caitlin. So here is the property and we wanted to put these next two slides up to give you context. So if you're going down Old Point Road, as I suggested earlier, you take a right up on Gloria Street and you literally go up a hill. And then you have the house on the left-hand side, you go back down. This is where the basin is, it's certainly not subject to, you know, the wave action that exists um at the mouth of the river or actually out on reservation terrace. Um so if you view it from that perspective and how the construction is occurring and frankly, how the remainder of the lot is remaining open. Um and still in full compliance with uh the zoning ordinance. You can see that this proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to um the pie odd or to um. Or to the neighborhood. And if you could go to the next slide, and this is just a wider view, so you can see the basin. Um which is the closest water body here um to uh this property. And I I just thought that that was important, that you can see that it's away from. The issues that are happening on the barrier beach um to the east. So with that, we believe that the proposal demonstrates consistency with the purposes of the pie odd. It's elevated, it allows for the movement of sand and water, it means the FEMA requirements, it's a condensed development. The the actual structure itself that creates the additional F A R is fully compliant with all of the dimensional, the setback requirements. The open space and the uh lot coverage are well underneath the uh requirements of the ordinance. Um and we believe that the board can find that the proposed improvements are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would also um tell you that there are uh five letters of support that have been provided also from uh the neighborhood. Um around the proposal hall on Gloria Street. And um with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and Finn is available to answer any questions as well.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Uh we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. Uh anyone in the room wish to speak in connection with the application, uh just kind of raise your hand and. Will you give me the floor? Seeing no one, uh we'll go online and. If there's anyone online uh that wishes to be heard, uh please just virtually raise your hand and we'll recognize you and have you open your mic and. And uh you will have an opportunity to see. Seeing no hands online and no hands in the room, we'll close the public comment and go to questions from the board. Uh Mr. Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Caitlin, could we move to the site plan? So in the, on the site plan, the uh as per usual, the beige and light beige represent the, the proposed um expansion. Uh now where the the darker beige box is, which is the the addition, the other. Lighter beige being decks, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Under there, it says woodwalk, so is that, that's a little wooden walk that exists currently?
Today, that's correct.
And between the woodwalk and the addition of, or the existing structure is just a a patch of sand or a few feet.
Correct.
With the sand, okay. And then. The, that sort of L portion of the, of the proposed addition, that is over the existing deck.
Correct.
Okay. Um.
And you can actually see the size of the deck, so I said it was a little bit bigger and it truly is just a little bit deeper than the existing deck, it's not much at all.
Right. And then there's that, that structure that says bench, is that actually like a bench?
It's um, it's kind of like the, I think it was like a seventies bed, at least on Plum Island, where the bench is built into the deck railing.
Oh, yeah, okay, I understand, I understand, okay, okay. Yeah, that is a seventies, yeah. Okay. And then in the uh proposed addition, there's no, no new bathroom being proposed or.
No, no new bathrooms.
Um okay, that's all I have for questions, thanks.
Sorry, Mr. Bennett?
Yeah. Just to make sure, there, there's no new plumbing whatsoever, is there?
No, no additional.
Right, there's a kitchen is being moved around, right, you're doing.
Kitchen, we almost, it's basically just tacking all the rooms, uh you know, no additional movement of the kitchen.
So explain to me uh. Um. Why the far goes up about twenty percent, like what's accounting for that?
Sure, so that additional square footage is being added, right? So the current far is twenty-eight percent. So there's almost five hundred square feet being added. Um and if you go to the models, that might be the easiest. To see. Yeah, go to that. So you can see that square footage straight ahead in the, in the sliders, right? So that's being added. And then.
Is that a vaulted room or is there a?
No, there's a second floor on there, yeah.
Uh yes.
Correct.
On the addition.
So I can tell you the exact square footage of each floor because I have it, hang on a second. So in the existing house, the first floor, ground floor, is four twenty-seven, so a little key's coming up, that's about four twenty. Second floor on the existing is five oh one. And it's going to be seven ten. And the third floor, which is actually the second floor, right, because you don't count the ground, is two seventy-four and is going to be five twenty-six. So that's all within that. Addition.
So the total square footage. The total increase in square footage, approximately how much?
About five hundred, just, just slightly under five hundred.
And that increase in the current square footage.
Twelve oh two to sixteen fifty-six. You're welcome.
Good, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, um and I knew uh commented the addition is going to be still there, which is excellent idea.
Right.
Uh but the remaining building is not, it has a real base.
Right.
So it is still at risk during a flood.
It would be a really big flooding.
It would, it would, I agree, it's up high.
Right.
Well.
Well, right. Um. In context.
In context, yes, yes. Uh, yeah, so although the addition is still the, the original building structure is a basement and you're. You're counting that in far.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
So I would suggest remove the basement.
Well, that would mean. Right. We can't do that.
Where you can't just.
Right.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bennett.
I don't have any questions.
All right, and uh it's just one.
Uh, yeah, I, you mentioned the existing house is twelve oh two. And if I divide that by forty-nine hundred square feet. That's a twenty-four point five percent far, so the, the way you got to twenty-eight must have been including the shed that's coming down, is, is that correct?
Right, under the, under the zoning code enforcement officer's directions. You count the, you count the outbuildings if they meet a certain dimensional requirement.
Right, no, I understand. So it's kind of like a two-step project here. If you get rid of the outbuilding. You go into conformance at twenty-four point five. And then this proposal will bring you up to thirty-three point eight. I just want to make sure I understand the math here.
Yeah, in, in fact, the outbuildings are one hundred seventy-nine square feet, so the current square footage on the entire property right now is thirteen eighty-one. In accordance with Miss Blanchett's calculations.
Yeah, I get it. I, I just looked at the twelve oh two. By the way, I, I took the drive up there recently on a pretty day. That is a very pretty spot. I mean, you're up high, you can see all around, it's a very pretty spot. Um, the um. I, I guess, uh I'd like to go back to, to Mr. Shagnan's uh question. Uh. You know, you mentioned earlier, well, the city thinks there's a, a bedroom in the basement, but not really, and, and we, you know, we don't need to have that in there. Could you, you know, he, he asked, once you get rid of the basement, what is in the basement currently?
Well, so it's a room down there, right? And is, there's definitely more than one room, right?
Laundry.
Laundry. Right, so there's laundry down there and then this other room and the thing, to take. Away the basement, you have to rebuild the entire structure and that's a whole different financial issue, right? That's. That's not, it's not even feasible for the client, so um. You know, we're, we're happy to have a restriction that there are two bedrooms in this, they cannot use that first floor, ground floor room as a bedroom, right? So we're happy to have you say, we approve this special permit condition on the fact that it's two bedrooms. I, I don't have, nobody has a problem with that.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Very good. Uh I don't have any further questions either, so unless there's any additional questions from the board. Seeing no hands, uh we'll close questions and go right into deliberations. Again, we're deliberating the criteria under section nine B two. For a special permit for non-conformities, uh and we'll begin with Mr. Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh again, here we, I don't see any new non-conformity, uh so that, that goes away immediately. Uh with respect to whether the proposal is substantially more detrimental to the. Uh to the neighborhood or to the pie odd, I, I don't think it is and I can support this.
Very good. Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, I come to the same conclusion. I must say that I'm, I'm oftentimes amused. And I'm sometimes impressed by the architectural cleverness that has demonstrated here in Plum Island, and this is another example of that. Uh so I think it works very well, so congratulations to them. Uh. And as a side, I, I come actually to love this eclectic uh architectural. Polkery out there on Plum Island. Uh it gives it extraordinary character and I think it's pretty neat. Uh so I, I approve this, I think it's good, but, but I would just say that the comments from Mr. Shagnan and uh. About the basement, uh really are, are quite serious in another context, but I mean, there are broader development initiatives here on Plum Island. Members of all kinds know why that's in one way or other. Uh we don't have necessarily all the tools to, to resolve this, but um. Uh congratulations, I think it's a bit of a, it's got up to this structure, so. For free.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, um I agree with some of the comments. I guess my biggest concern is the far increase. And in the past, we've, we've really struggled with this. Um, you know, it's, it's somewhat substantial, twenty-eight, thirty-three percent. Uh so a little bit offensive with that, uh but that's, that's, that's the only thing that's giving me an interpretation. I think the design is modest. Um it's a unique building when you look at it. You're, you're increasing uniqueness, which I, I guess goes with the uh architecture. Uh the extension, like I said, is modest, I think it's well done. Uh my only uh concern right now is, is the, the far. You know, uh this board has at times taken a stand on. You know, anything over two or three percent, especially when it's over by three percent already. Uh so I'll, I'll wait to hear the rest of the comments from my, my buddies, see where we go.
All right, uh Mr. Bennett?
I don't have any objections.
Uh okay, that, that just leaves our final buddy, uh Mr. Slon, he is a good buddy.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I have a similar concern with, with, um, with Bud. Um. Uh you know, I think there's a lot to like about this proposal and this design. Um the location certainly is, is a great location. Um. My concern is about the impact on the pie odd. I mean, th- this is a, essentially by getting rid of the shed, this thing becomes conforming. Uh from a far point of view at, at twenty-four point five and then to go up to thirty-three point eight. If we would let every property on Plum Island go over the guideline to thirty-three point eight, that would have a very detrimental effect, in my opinion. On the um. Pie odd, uh because it's such a fragile environment. Um so that, that's my concern. Um yeah, there's a lot to like about the proposal, but that is my lingering issue.
Okay, uh well, I, I'll just add, you know, I, I, I'm always concerned about better help, but I think that. If there's a galvanizing sort of, you know, grade leveler in this process is that we have that criteria and that each of us. And every board in sort of our company and in our absence, or now and in the future, you're getting this, you know, like the first instance. Uh everyone on whatever zoning code appeals to the reality, you know, gets to review these things case by case. So I, I, I always try to do that as well and I'm, I'm less. Moved in sort of going down that rabbit hole of the act, with due respect to, you know, the rabbit hole. Attraction for us all to sort of add it all up and say, my God, I like, what's to come with? Uh you know, a fragile resource area like a violent, I, I still just look at each one sort of case by case, knowing what we hear does. And as I look at this, in this case. You know, I feel like it's. It's it's not an immodest request. You know, given where it is and and it's very rare for me. I'll say because I drive up and down that road a lot, we all go up short. But there are. There are few changes in the topography of Palm Island. That is so disparate from the rest of Palm Island. It's basically a sandbar barrier island. But there to be a rise in the goal. Uh, creates kind of an interesting, you know, interesting point that. If I'm thinking about sea level rise, I'm worrying about the aggregate and impact and other things. You know, I'm thinking this is probably a more secure place. It seems to be a modest request for me, and so I I do get supported for the same reasons. But but Mr. Swan, like you're you pointed out correctly, I too share your, you know. You're sort of, um, you know, the undercurrent concern of of as we look at all of these. We must remain vigilant. I think it's important to just. Be thoughtful in our decision. So, uh, that's all I share. That's. Any other questions or sorry, any other comments or further deliberations? Before I close and we move into votes. Seeing none, Mr. Swan, anything further?
Nope.
Okay, uh, I'll close deliberations and, uh, we will go to a vote. We have a motion.
I'll make I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, vision for five glorious streets in the seat from two dash thirty five, special permit for nonconformities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a second. I have a second motion. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Motion's made, uh, by Mr. Chen and seconded by Mr. Bennet, calling the vote. A motion to approve. The special permit for nonconformities, uh, Mr. Villal.
Uh, did we want to take them up on the restriction?
Yeah, do you want to make a modification to your motion prior to the motion?
Uh, sure, I'll, uh, my plan, Mr. Chen, motion to include the, uh, restriction that there be. Uh. No bedroom on the on the ground.
Very good. Very good. And, uh. Mr. Bennet, you, uh, reendorse your second. We reendorse very good. So, uh, we have a motion made with the condition, uh, no bedroom unless. Uh, motion's made and sent in, calling the vote. A motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities with that condition, Mr. Villal.
Yes.
Yes, it's Chen, yes, Mr. Swan.
No.
And, uh, Rob Champion, I believe, yes, that's, uh, for the affirmative, the, uh, eyes have it, motion carries and it's approved. Good luck here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Come, buddy, then.
Very good. All right, and, uh. Moving now to our, uh. Final application this evening. This is the application of the basin apparel at nineteen Water Street. This is a variance request under our sign or the sign portion of our ordinance. Uh, it is a variance. Uh, by the application to install two wall signs, each exceeding the maximum sign allowance. And, uh, with that, may we hear from the.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kathy Brown. I am representing Karen Fatib, who is the owner of Basin Apparel. She is unfortunately unable to be here. Uh, she's home with a sick child. Her husband Matt Katib is in the audience and, uh, also representing the sign center. Uh, myself and Jake, owner of the sign center. Uh, we are asking for relief from. Section. D, uh. Section A, D, three, A and B, uh, I'm sorry, B and C. In order to install, uh, two exact same size signs. On two separate frontages on the subject property. The, uh, current max square footage is twelve feet. We feel that would be. Uh, a little too small for such a large building. And considering the topography of the land, uh, as the, um, the roadway opens up and then narrows suddenly. Uh, not having a wall sign on both. Sides could be tricky. I myself went there knowing. Where everything was and went right past that. Building before I could even stop and look. Um, we have permitted already an eight square foot projection sign, which will be installed where you see on the white circle. Uh, that will probably be installed next week. We would like to put. The, uh, wall sign for the front facade exactly where you see it. Uh, these are both non-illuminated signs. They are both twenty two point four two square feet. Which is over ten feet. Ten square feet, my apologies, uh, larger than the, uh, very restrictive twelve square feet allowed by the. Running a leave for this would not be injurious to others because we're we're moving. We're placing signs that are not illuminated. It would do. Very. Good, uh, to base apparel by being able to properly advertise. Their new expanded location, therefore able to increase their business, which is good for Newbury for it. And good for the people of Newbury for it. We're not trying to denigrate the law here. We're trying to respect the spirit of the law in that we are coming to you. Directly and doing this the correct way versus the previous. As, uh, was described to me as a problem business that had. Um, many signs on the front. If you can go down to slide. Uh. And as you can see here, the previous tenant had, um, an eight foot square blade sign. They have an awning with three separate signs on it. Uh, they had one. They had a numerous, uh. Pictograms of furniture, uh, plus they have all of the, um. Window vinyl on that side. And apparently. They didn't do it the right way. We are going to make it a point of not cluttering the front of the building. That is why we only we only want the, uh, the current blade sign and the wall sign. Uh, from fifty feet away, it's very difficult down there to see. When you're driving. From any direction. And if you're coming down Market Street, you would need that sign because the. Blade sign isn't enough for you to see directly in front of you. The sign on the other side of the building on Ferry. That urban element sign is the same size as what we proposed. However, we are not illuminating the sign and that was a halo with sign. We're removing that, so that is to the full good. For other examples of, uh, signs that are currently around. This is Market Street Jewelers. They have awnings. They have one sign each side. Next slide, please. Uh, M K Jewelers here has one wall sign on each. Side of the building and they have a blade sign coming off the very corner. Of the building, so that is another example. If you go down one more, please. This has, one business has four signs. On it. And then the other, the playhouse has its own separate sign. Go down again. And Starbucks has two wall signs on other side of the side and they have a Starbucks logo in the front. So having two signs and a blade sign would not be. Out of the realm of acceptable. I believe. Considering the signs in the area. Um, understanding that during. High traffic periods, if it's, you're still looking around, but you have pedestrians. That you have to be careful of. And if you do not have proper signage that size correctly for the size of the building. Uh, it's easy to miss and it's very difficult to get around trying to turn around and get back to building and. I just. I myself had trouble. Finding the, um. Sign the first time. I went there, so. Um. The signage proposed is not going to go over five percent of the, uh, facade of that building. On either side. So we ask that, um. The board would be willing to grant us the additional square footage to. Put the two twenty two point four two square foot signs up on two sides of the building. In addition to the blue light sign, and that is what we are asking for tonight.
Very good. Uh, thank you very much. And, uh, we may have additional questions when we get to that period, but, uh, we'll close. Presentation portion of public hearing and go to public comment. Uh, anyone in the room wish to speak? Yes, listening.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman, Chairman Hiddin, Stephanie Mickich, ninety three High Street. So, um. The applicant is running two of ten units in this building. And I guess one of the things I want to understand is, are those two units the entire first floor of the building? Um. So that's, that's a question. Um. So the, uh, request to have two signs on different sides of the building does not seem unreasonable. There also is still a blade sign that is going to go up. Um. But the applicant is proposing two signs which are nearly double the twelfth. Uh, what's square foot maximum allowed for a single sign? Um. I don't know what other signage could be allowed on this building. So that's another question. Um, as long as this. Company is the tenant of those two units, is that it for the signage? So that's a question. Um, but I also. You know, with those questions answered, I don't see a hardship here. If you grant a variance. Um, wouldn't other tenants in other buildings. Nearby ask for the same thing. It's more bling. I understand the examples of signage. Downtown, which may have. Been put up without enforcement, without coming before you, um, my grandfather. But this is our ordinance now and it is to protect, um, the, uh. Is to protect. The and enhance the visual environment of the city. This is a very dense area. This building was right next door to the Custom House Maritime Museum. Um. Someone shouldn't be driving down the street at such a pace that they couldn't see. Um, and their navigator couldn't see that they're 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 getting up to their address. Um. So my concern is if you grant this request for a variance. It would completely undermine the purpose of this, um, section of the zoning ordinance. And that. Anyone. With this granted can say, we have the same hardship. If this is a hardship, and I argue it's not, there's no hardship here. But if that's it. We have the same thing. So, um, you know, in fairness, can't we also have much bigger signage? So I am at, I'm asking you, please deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mickich. Uh, anyone else in the room wish to speak in connection with the application? Yes.
Good evening, Matt Katib, seventeen Ting Street. Um, the. We can always say like, if if everybody downtown's got to upgrade their sizes because one one store upgraded their size. However, uh. The the space that we have on the building is massive and to put a twelve foot square, twelve square foot sign on a building that size. Uh, we've tested it. It just, it looks, you you won't be able to see it. It's just the front is sixty five feet on the front side and ninety three feet on the other. Um, uh, I do, um, request. Your kindness, please, of approving the sign, uh, since it's a huge upgrade on what the current situation is. Or the previous tenants. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Katib. Any additional questions, uh, public comments? I should say. Anyone in the room, I'm going to go to online, anyone. Online who wishes to speak, just kind of raise your hand virtually, we'll recognize you. Okay, uh, seeing no hands there, no further hands in the room. I'm going to close the public comment section. And go to questions from the board and we'll start with Mr. Swan.
Um. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first question, you walked us through a bunch of the other buildings. Um, that have similar signage. Do you know the dimensions of the signage, uh, on those other buildings that you walked us through?
Uh, I can guesstimate that I would be incorrect. Uh, I didn't want to be the strange person walking around measuring everyone's signs. Um, I was actually questioned by someone on the street when I was measuring the front of this building. As to, oh, what are you doing? Why are you doing that? And this was on a Sunday.
But, okay, so you're the the proposed sign based apparel company is. Hundred and sixty one inches. What is that? Did you say it's twelve? So that's a hundred and forty four, so it's like fourteen?
Yeah, approximately, yes. The the sign size is based on, uh, what would be appropriate. Size signage for the size of the building and due to the fact that they occupy the entire. Um. Part, what first floor of the building, which was, I believe, um, units nine and ten. But for a building that large and for a use that large, it's in comparison to other. Businesses down there, it's bigger.
Yeah, okay, so it's thirteen, it's thirteen feet wide and about two feet high. Um. And would you say that? You know, in your opinion, that those other sides are. At least thirteen feet long and two feet high or?
In combination or separate? The ones that this, the ones of the, uh.
Starbucks side.
Those could be twelve foot sign, twelve square foot each, but I I would not want to actually come down with a number because again, I did not. Measure those signs. But on a building that big, to put a twelve or a a twelve square foot sign literally looks like, uh. Piece of gum on a piece of paper. It's very small. Are they are the same size?
The which which jeweler?
M K Jewelers.
Uh, so how how would you address the the hardship issue?
If you're unable, when, uh, as the, um. Member of the public stated, uh, she doesn't think people, uh, should be driving through there fast. Um, what about people who are coming in from out of town? Like I did. I came in from out of town. Uh, I navigated that whole area on Google and yet I still managed to go right past. And I was looking for that building. So if you're from out of town, you don't know what the building looks like, but you just are looking for the basin apparel. Having very small signs is not going to, um. Allow you to find where you're looking for and then be able to go find apartment space and walk back.
Okay, please, stop me for a second. I don't think the hardship is. The, from the perspective of the person looking for the store. Well, I I understand what you're saying, but the the concept that we're trying to get out here is kind of legal concept, so. We need to address that head on. Uh, so what for the basin apparel shop? In the business, what would be the hardship?
The hardship would be if people were unable to find the location easily. That they would become frustrated and decide not to go and business could fall off. They are expanding their business. They would like to bring. More business into Newbury for it. And. This would be a good way to do it. To show. A nice store. With appropriately sized signage, which is easy to find. Uh, versus, well, when you're driving and someone's navigating, someone is trying to. Uh, tell you where something is and they can't see it because the sign is too small. I I don't know about anyone else, but I would get frustrated and not going.
I have no more questions for this time. Maybe I'll come back with, uh, later on.
Did you have a part of partial answer to, uh, to Mr. Fly's question?
Hey, John, from the sign center, representing Matt here. In terms of, um, so it's topography first, in terms of how it's on two streets. So two sides of upper building. So we have the pottery. It is certainly not injurious to others. It is matching one sign that's already on the building. And I don't believe that you could find a permit listed for it. So it's in the the not injurious to the community, to the spirit of the ordinance. It is substantial justice for Matt and Karen in terms of operating square footage of this. So but the primary hardship comes from the pottery and the unit service.
Thank you, thank you, now, Mr. Bennett.
I saw that question. You said there was a prior sign.
Which, can we go back to?
Urban Elements, so is there? Yes. Oh, okay, that's the sign.
So it's the exact same size as that sign?
It is.
And that sign was little.
That's, that was the back of the building.
That's this, this, the, what's the same as you.
Yeah, that's very, that's a very worse sign.
Yeah. So was there a sign on the front of Urban Elements, I think there was?
So it was all the awnings, the blade sign is the max, the awnings and the fact that they put all the signs in between on, on the record side.
So that is the four, that's all we were talking about.
Same.
So you are going to install a blade sign, is that correct?
We are using the same bracket, same size, so.
And what's, how big is that?
It's eight square feet.
Okay. And will that blade sign be illuminated at all?
It is not.
Can it be illuminated under zoning?
I believe it can be casted, it can't be internal, I believe it can be casted.
It can be spot, like, okay. Have you considered putting another blade sign on the other on the other side?
I think the challenge is, is that you have two types of users of the space, you have pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic. And you're trying to deal with both in terms of it, and as you can see from the angle of the building, you can't see either side, and as you come around that corner, as Kathy said, there's a significant change in how the road bends there. So
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll just
So blades
Take a point, excuse me. I mean, you have that sign in the middle, the cars are coming up and around, they will be passing before they see it, they'll see the blade sign on either side first.
Blade sign at eight square feet, we're only at twelve inch characters for the building size. It will not be a readable sign as another blade sign for a year. So blade signs are primarily there for all the shops that you have on all the different streets in the water conscious and in the downtown district, as if they were twenty square feet or twenty linear feet or so. That is not what this business is.
Let's go back to the urban interior sign, do you know if that if they're, the lease from the zoning board was granted?
We could not find it in the record.
But you looked?
We didn't.
Okay. And how about, and I thank you for these photographs, and also I have to say this is a great improvement to the retail community, it's a wonderful store. I probably spent too much time in this. In any event, and I, I found it. But in any event, do you know anything, probably an answer, but about some of these other signs that you identified? The Nati Market Square, Starbucks, do you know their regulatory histories at all?
I did not check on those, they appear to be within hours.
Well, they're not, there are probably a number of signs on two screens, so it's, it's the same conditions, the same zone, and we do not know, we only check the history on this building.
We must go with the other jeweler.
We, we are helping now with that, now.
Yeah.
Matt can answer that, I can't answer that. Now answer the question, I just don't know.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
The total square footage on that sign and given out in dealers and the ones in the print is, is confirming it's twelve square feet on both sides, but the, the only thing that we got this added to it is the two logos next to the signs, that's, that's the only thing that, that we added. The blade sign, we had a special permit for it because we ended up with three signs on the side of the building. So we have one on middle, one on state, and then an additional blade sign on the corner of middle and state.
And actually, I would say they're very tasteful. Thank you, well on that structure, thank you. Can I ask you a little bit about how you chose colors here?
That's also Matt, that's their branding. Oh, that's your, that's a part of the branding, the colors, so it's the base and apparel, so we have blue and green which is for the water the, the water basin to the mountain basin, like I, I always says.
I guess unions and I want green? I love green, I don't like, I'm just one, I my aesthetic, I would, I like something a little more in harmony with the feel of the building, which might apply to the bone or, or what you did in here, like the depths. My own aesthetic, everybody
Trying to give me a trouble with my wife.
I don't have anyone question. I but I, but I do wonder, I'll direct this to the chair, I do, is there I don't think, is there a book of sign variances or something, is there any way we can understand how the various signs have or have not?
Where do you find anything regarding variances, special permits, any, just anything that's recorded with the registry of deeds? You could actually search on the registry of deeds website, so you would go to SalemDeeds.com and plug in the address of any location and then you can get the history of any variances, any special permits, any mortgages, deeds, the whole nine yards there.
I, I think, thank you, Zach. The, the question I believe Mr. Bennett may be asking though is, is a waiting call internally of that, you know, university portal box or sign up. I can say this, I think you guys all know this, I, I've been on this board since oh-two. I've been involved in every single sign that's ever changed in that period of time, that's twenty years. And, and I'll say that I haven't maybe there, there is no rhyme or reason other than a migration toward the establishment of signage that is in harmony with the architectural materials, mass and scale, and a lighting sort of aesthetic that seems to be we'll call it obvious, but no internal lighting. And you know, attention to that sort of detail. Every single one of these applications that are kind of our, you know, our province and our charges is, is by itself a case by case standalone application. It neither follows nor does it set precedent. We can make one decision for a variety of fluid reasons based on a very thin criteria on Monday and then find a different conclusion on the Tuesday and find both of those to be cohesive, coherent and credible, even though they're not the same, and that is sort of the magic slash lack of magic of this process, we all know. It, it's, you know, it's devoid of writing, it's liquid non-solvent, right? And that's the discretionary process of finding hardship, if we can find it, where it exists or not. And when I look at our approach or attempt to approach a sign application, to answer your question directly though, Mr. Bennett, we can simply call the applications that have come before this board in X number of periods of time and say, which of these are variances and then which of these are sign variances? I, I should have to think how easy or hard that process might be.
I understand, I understand.
But I mean, like, you know, I would
I'm very concerned that, that we had a willingly approached, there's been a history of
Yeah.
granting of variances that would inform how I think the boards will get other requests.
I, we, we've often, you know, for instance, a monument sign, like signs that existed in, in, I'll use an example like the car wash, I'll story out. When that changed hands and a bunch of years ago, the sign should be changed. And so it was an improvement along this sort of vibrating signage aesthetic of granite monument pillars and a, what they call sign core foam core and, or it's slightly applied. Just using that term of art, which resembles sandblasting and, and both relieve and you know, relief and recession and, and sort of recession of elements to give it depth and then ground light and or interior lighting. And you know, I think Dallas is a perfect example, but that building unfortunately suffered fire. The sign has changed completely, it was sort of a you know, it was a a thought leading sign, you know, for Duncan Dallas to grant it because they had to go through trying to figure out how to make their sign work with, you know, in our communities alone in this, there are many other communities you know, all around the Commonwealth that have this sort of aesthetic, but that's really the best I could say from my own, for what it's worth, recollection and involvement is that each case is a little bit different, but that's the general core of what we try to do. We are often asked to grant these sign applications because it's just nature of our zone. Seems like it shouldn't be, but it is, and so I, this is one member trying to look at it. I look at what was there as part of the context, I don't know whether we are finding hardship correctly or not, that's where Bennett went to wear black robes to decide, but as a board of just volunteer citizens that are doing our level best and trying to figure out if it's right or just incredible or client for years. We look at them all basically as I, I don't know if that's helpful or helpful, and there's a whole bunch of them, but yeah, I think that but I mean, it's worth sharing, you know, what it's for that is.
So just to go back to the blade sign, is it what size is it again?
Eight square feet.
Two by four.
Is it, is it possible to increase that size to the swell, twelve third square foot max permitted, or is it, would that be prudent, would it, I mean, what's your professional opinion on that?
That, that they are repurposing the existing bracket and it would in its current position, it probably isn't prudent for this property, it doesn't achieve any more pedestrian view in terms of readability. So the, the size and mass of the built, the building signs are all taking the house designed to fit the space, a bigger blade sign, I don't think helps accomplish the goals of the tenant. And had there been two tenants in there, there would have been two different tenants asking for this sign, they took the entire space. Well, we can move on, right, that's why I said, yeah.
Did you have any other designs that you worked with in addition to the one that's presented to us?
They were all branded, so all the design changes that we worked with Matt and Karen were based on branding, not on the size of it based on starting with what was there. And then what, they're only twelve inch letters, they're not, they're not enormous letters.
When did the, you know, when that urban interior sign went up?
I do not.
Twenty-ten to twenty.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and that never came before us in my direction, and I just showed up. But I remember what the latest reasons where that story came into thereabouts.
So you have community people trying to do the right thing in terms of
I, I, I've never questioned that. Any point, that's not what, Mr. Bennett, anything, no.
Mr. Chairman?
Got just one question, the, the pictures that you're showing now, as an example, I assume you scaled that sign on the building
That's correct.
to the building, so that is what it will look like.
That is, that's correct.
I guess after that, so that's about twice the size of what's a lot, which if you made that in half, you almost couldn't read it across the street. I, I think this came up when we were doing the physical therapy building on Craft Road, they had this tiny little sign and they actually put it up, you couldn't read it from Craft Road. So they, they two and a half times the size of it. And now it looks like, yes, because it's a big though. So I think they're running under the same thing here, is you almost wouldn't see it until you were on site, but I have no other questions.
Yes, I have a question about the materials, you explained the colors a little bit, but the choice of materials, aluminum and vinyl, and in your application you referred to the spirit of the ordinance, so the ordinance says, is the intent of this by law to protect and enhance the visual environment of the city, signs must be appropriate to the building, and I found it really interesting that you chose signs in town that are very different from this, but visually coherent with one another and appropriate to the building, so the market square jeweler's lettering, can we look at that? Looks, you know, it's black and gold, very appropriate treatment. And then the, the Benati jewelry sign, yeah, okay, I see, and that's the sea level sign, it has the wooden planks and sort of raised lettering. I think the Starbucks building, all the Starbucks building and the sign respects the architecture of the building and the Urban Elements sign, which I think Mr. Bennett mentioned, the whole in the black, and so I think all of these signs together show us how materials like this and then colors in this palette can contribute to that visual coherence, so I'm wondering about the choice of aluminum and vinyl, Liberty Law also has lovely signage that I think can bring to that that character downtown, so I'm gonna ask about aluminum and vinyl.
So the decisions came from the client in terms of simplicity? The branding came from the client in terms of simplicity, they certainly could be dimensional, either carved, which was mentioned already, or dimensional raised letters, which is what you're showing in other cases. It was, it was the simplicity of the branch, that was client request, and so obviously that year, I don't know if he wants to speak for his wife or not, whether they would be willing to consider making those dimensional signs either way, assessed for product. But how, that's how we got there, was by client direction. Again, in terms of the branding, that was done specifically for the message they're trying to deliver, which is how it didn't come into the black and gold, it was the brand that they want for their product line.
Does Matt can get any further?
That's it for now.
Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, um I would like to kind of go back to what my colleague, Mr. Delisle was talking about. You're asking for a zoning variance here. And while it's true that we've done sign variances off in the industrial park and in various far flung parts of Newbury Court, I don't ever recall doing one down here in the Crown Jewel, if you will, in Market Square. No one's ever asked us that during my time on the board for the last three years. So I see this as kind of unusual and I just look at what's required here, what we have to decide is, do, do you guys have a hardship that we can support a variance, and the hardship is very black and white? You have conditions that are unique to your lot, structure and building that don't apply to the neighborhood. And, and frankly, isn't this building very similar to all the other brick buildings downtown? That's a question.
So obviously, the architecture is, is quite some. And so what you are identifying is at least implied, because we did not do the historical check, is that all those businesses did it without permitting and, you know, enforcement. But you have community members that are coming before you to try and do this the correct way to brand this business, which they just opened. Because we have demonstrated all that stuff is there, how it got there.
Yeah, if I could, if I could respond to that, I mean, there's two issues here, one is, can you have a sign on two sides of the building and the other is the size of the sign? And as I read the ordinance, you can have a sign on each side that faces a public way. And you could argue that the driveway back to that giant parking lot is not a public way, but I kind of think it is. So I don't really have an issue with having two signs here, one on each side of the building, my issue is entirely with the size of the sign. Because the next thing here is we can't, we can't grant you something that gives you a special privilege different from all your neighbors. And no one's ever asked for an oversized sign down here in, in the Crown Jewel of Newbury Court, so that's where I'm stuck, basically, and to, to respond to your other point about what about, what about these other folks, well, that Starbucks sign looks like it's within twelve feet, so do the two jewelry stores. And, okay, you found one, Urban Outfitters. But this city did not have a zoning enforcement officer a few years ago and decided it better have one to make sure its ordinances are better enforced. And that zoning enforcement officer kind of blew the whistle on this one, and I'm still waiting for you to say what your hardship is here, because that's Hardship is here because that's the only way we can give you a variance to say this building is very unique compared to its neighbors. And I just. I I don't hear the response to that basically.
It comes down to the readability, but the hardship is departed. It is the shape of the streets. It is the nature of where the position of that building is. And so it sounds like we are not talking about the two signs, but the square footage and signs.
Yes, entirely. Yes.
Are you gonna make it a completely unreadable sign? That sign came down to twelve square feet. You would not be able to read it, which was already addressed for some of the project.
You can read the Starbucks sign me to drive by. You can read the jewelry store signs you drive by. I don't understand. Your sign. Is a bright white with green on top of it. It seems actually more legible than some of these other signs.
Twelve inch characters and I should have brought with me the distance at which you can read it at which speed. I do not have those facts. Those are well researched. Pieces of information in terms of weather height to speed in terms of readability.
I hear you, but your hardship can't be readability. It has to be. Your building is unique and different from your neighbors. That's what you're really proposing here. And if you are out in the in the industrial park. It'd be a very different situation. You're in the you're in the heart of. The historic district of downtown that draws so many people to Newburyport. Uh, and and that's where I'm troubled. And I, you know, Mr. Delisle started in on this question about the variance and. That that's where I'm stuck. So anyway, I I will yield my time to the next colleague.
All right. Um, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Well, I mean, I guess circles to me and. This is uh not so much a question, but it probably will get there. Mr. Swanton had mentioned, uh, you know, asked the question about certain signage. And for what it's worth, you know, can I actually have a recollection of a few? I don't know if they sort of fit the right role, but. Several years ago, Brown's War came before this board and I was on the board at the time. That's down next to just in front of um. What used to be Black Town now behind, what is it? Brown's War was looking for a sign expansion or commensurate with their building size. And uh, and. We were, we struggled over the permitting of that. It turned out to be a halo backlit sign, which was very, very novel and unique. For an architectural, you know, building such as that. And not everybody on the board felt like minded about it. Uh, what are you to do with examples you aligning with? Uh, but that's the sign that's there now. That's the sign that was permitted. Uh, in Market Square, there was Barra. Uh, they came before this board for their sign. Families Real Estate came in for this board for their sign. Uh, and uh, there is a law firm that. And there's a law firm and a dentist office that have signage on that building in Market Square directly above the Barra sign. With like an arrow that points up uh industry by the whole. Different sizes, different examples. Uh, but. I remember when we toured with that for what it was worth, each one had different circumstances. Um, you know. From my standpoint, the question that I I this is, we're still a question. So I'm gonna ask you this question. Uh, Ms. Nigga did you made a, she posed a question that I would kind of echo. To see if we can drill down to an answer with just a certainty about it. The question I believe this negative had asked was. Uh, do you occupy, you know, the entirety of that? Unit that occupies that fancy entirety of that first floor. And I think the question, and forgive me to paraphrase. This big attention is in the room, but the question really drills down to. What is the likelihood of there being additional signage or all of the sign possibilities represented in this request? Because all of the occupancy is represented in this request. That's the question.
So I can assess one part. All the occupancy is, is in fact, okay, the base of apparel. Would, how long a lease did you sign? So you're ten years of one tenant in that entirety of space.
And that's, I think that's relevant for me, uh, only and it may be for my colleagues, but it's relevant for me just to anticipate. You know, is this the first of a, you know, death by a thousand cuts? Example of us fielding other questions and other requests for signage. Uh, because while we don't set a precedent, I believe in that. And I'm certainly comfortable defending that. We explain how our board work. Uh, and what we do and don't do. I think in fairness to, you know, a member of the public's comment. It it is hard to argue that the rules right here are different for you than the rules right here for you right next door, you know. And so that's where it trips a line a little bit for me. It's it's reassuring for me to know that that's not the case. And I believe for all of us to hear that. So the other question is, uh, is it your argument? I believe you posed a, you suggested an argument that. You hope we would, uh, we would feel as a uh, as a response to where's the hardship. And I believe what you had said was that it was tied to the the building shape. And again, forgive me for paraphrasing. You said it was. The uh, the location in that occupied quarter and it's on to, you know, it's on a corner spot. Um, and what I wonder whether you failed to say or whether you also said was the shape of this building is not. Does not conform with a a known geometry. You know, it's somewhere between a square and a round, right? If you look at it from there. So its shape, which is not uncommon for the colonial era. Conform with whatever the ways were of the day. So we see houses that are not right angled. Because the roads on which they sat were not right angle. There are lots of others. So, um, so. That is something that I would want to hear from you if that's in fact the proposal. Because that's one of our conditions that this board could, if it was inclined, consider as part of the evidence of hardship. A condition and circumstance that is unique to the African's lot, structure or building. And do not apply to the neighborhood lands, structures and buildings in the same district. You know, different shaped buildings, though they're all made of brick, are not necessarily the same. You know, even though they're right in the same district. So if you could address that for me, I I just want to hear that so that we can all hear it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Jen. Actually, I was coming from those, as I believe this previous report's there. Right? So we're dealing with colonial times. We were taking it from the other perspective. So these lots being a waterfront lot. Was building was positioned in such a way that made sense for whoever the landowner was. At that time, I don't know the age of this building. So my reference to exactly what you said.
It was a great fire of eighteen eleven decimated this entire downtown. All of these buildings were built with ballast brick. Off of the old ships that sat in mountains of waterfront between eighteen fifteen and eighteen twenty, almost everyone of these buildings. Seem to be constructed, uh, you know, according to that, the new report, uh, historic register and, uh.
Is there a way to look at the building from like an aerial view? It it just to to reiterate a pointer, the building is shaped. Uh, very strangely because actually on Water Street, it dipped, it goes inward the river, almost behind the custom house.
That's, yeah, this building is not. It's not in parallel.
And it's not actually square and like a center square building is actually more, it it's shorter on the on the uh custom house size, actually much shorter. Uh, distance to.
And and I'll say also. Well, the seller was looking for that. And I think that helps for all of us to see because it's it's, you know. If we're trying to understand whether there is a possibility of a hardship, not to suggest that any one of us is inclined to go find it. But it's important to know, you know, what's the calculus of what's there? Is it? Is there something unique to the shape, geography, building, structure, et cetera? We would want to know that. Seeing from the air will help us. Also, um, that driveway entrance is defined, it would be a pub. Can I agree with you? That is a public way under chapter ninety. And it's defined, you know, public ways are not necessarily public streets. There are any way to which the public has reasonable access and ingress. So a parking lot entrance is a public way. So if if a police officer pulled over a vehicle there, gave someone a sobriety test, they would satisfy the criteria of it being a public way. Which I think is the same.
The picture is actually in front of us if you wanted to see.
So. So as it aligns, is this really? But yeah, so so it addresses as it heads toward the customs house.
Right.
It follows what would have been the old pathway, right? Urban renewal was, you know, extended pedestrian. They created a new street. So your cars in your line of sight, I mean, outbound. Do not intersect in the ordinary way with the ordinary. Latency of view because the angle is cute. It seems like a chart, but that's good for us to all see. These really have been questions, but I'll ask you another question. Is there anything else you want to say?
You know, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate.
It's it's not easy for us sort of towards this, but we have to sort of gather. All right. So members, any other questions that any of this sort of raises that you want to ask?
I I can get comfortable on the notion of meeting their end requirements for all the reasons that you've said and all this. Artfully, I mean, seems to direct it. I appreciate that. But I I heard it back, Patricia's comments on the aesthetics of this. And I'm really, and. I I'm not going to stand in the way of this, but. If if there are my colleagues, particularly, that one seems to be so not, not me right in the know. I mean, is there a way to to maintain your marketing? I I get that. I'm comfortable that. Convincement that that's. But I mean, is the the. Strong white is there, is there a material or is there a way to? Tone that down or to make it more consistent with the, in my view, the the brick building itself. I mean, this. It's just my, my own aesthetic.
The contrast is extremely high. And so. Given that. Matt would be in an unusual position to to talk about the branding without Karen. I would suggest we do a continuance so that we can continue. If the general feeling is that we are. In the right direction that you're worried about the tone and manner of both the zone and the building. From an overall community perspective. Let us work with Karen and bring back options that she's comfortable with and that will address your concerns. Which we can't do tonight unless Matt wants it.
I I think that's. To just, to just, um, dug out. The the question, you know, that well, I guess our board is. I think it's the board has served, the community has served, and we're all served in this, this notion of taking a granular thoughtful approach. Even if it isn't timely and convenient, but sometimes it not oftentimes it is. I'll say this and and it's, you know, I'll pose it as a question. It. Are the materials vinyl and aluminum?
It would be because of the simplicity of the sign. Connor's got build is an aluminum band sign with vinyl lettering. So that was simplicity. For the the intent of the brand, but.
Anyway, I'll I'll say that in the weather, yeah. I'll I'll say this, I don't recall in my tenure having done the science we dealt with. That material choice having ever met with the favor of the board I've sat. In voting on signage. And that's not suggested there isn't that that's, I'm not suggesting that, you know. That's how this would go, but I'm just telling you what is in the record. And it sounds like at least one or more of our members are, you know, are fixing the look. So it should be acutely. Um, it should be acutely valuable to, you know, you're gonna say this. In the sort of aesthetic of wanting to see best possible result if there is one in the cards. Those material choices are not irrelevant. And I don't recall seeing that. Successful in the past. There is, there are other materials. You folks know better than that is. Uh, so I would encourage you as as our company to bring, you know, the best, you know, best foot forward in. The whatever the next hearing is going to be to to think thoughtfully about those choices too. Um, because all of this is part of that downtown aesthetic. Everyone of my colleagues said is an important. March deep building are are, in my opinion, are right on the money. And I know the teams share that sentiment as well. So. I um, I just want to make sure I I get that thought out. I agree with, you know, with my colleagues, point that out as well. Anything else from the board before we entertain and continue? Mr. Swan, anything further?
No, I just reiterate that, you know, I think most of us are fine with having signs on both sides. I if when you come back, I'd like to see. Um, what they look like from both sides. And if you have several choices, show what they look like. Um, but anyway, I I like the idea of taking what you learned and seeing if you can better address the concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Uh, anything that you wish to ask of us before we part company to sort of take back the issues or pre-deliver it on?
I I think it's clear in terms of materials and the colors. And when Old Gassy's own most of his property, we will provide for, we've been before you many times for different.
We know, we know respect your work. So it, you know, probably the biggest one is the vowels. And so we understand all that.
Um, this was following a brand and trying to deliver. So I I think as we talked about the criteria for the building shape and the park views, we described it, what that building is. And making it readable. I think we've gotten that. There's a self-imposed part of this is the name of the brush, right? So Starbucks is very short. And so we were stuck a little bit with the name of it. And so the characters are very modest. So I am hearing that that you want to have it from a tone and manner of better fit to this piece of the community on this building. And to review the materials. And so that's a lot of them.
Any member of CBA wish to add anything to that?
Yeah, I I I think that what you say with respect to the materials is is critical to me. I'm not. I was more concerned with the 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 variance piece of it, the actual legal piece. And I think we we've done a lot of work on that tonight to get. Ahead in the right direction on that. But I would say, uh, from my perspective, that, you know, your branding is your branding and I'm not. Going to comment on on the color choices. I think that that's you guys have have, you know, done whatever work we were going to do on that. So I wouldn't. Get in the way of that.
Anyone else? All right, um, hearing none, we will entertain the African's request to continue. Um, and we'll take a motion at a moment, but we have a slot available on Valentine's Day, two fourteen. The next meeting slot will be on two twenty eight. We can go further out if you need to. Very good. That you're you're first out. There's nothing on two twenty eight yet. Um, all right. So, um. Members of CBA, we have a motion to uh, a motion to continue the application to two twenty eight as a second. I'll summon, very good. Mr. Bennett's motion to continue to two twenty eight, seconded by. Karen or Mr. Shannon? All right, going to be in seconded, uh, calling the roll, uh, Mr. Delisle. Uh, yes, so did you have something? I I'm sorry, I I missed on the date. Yes, Mr. Bennett. Yes, Mr. Chen. Yes, and Mr. Swan.
Yes.
I vote yes, um, that is five in the affirmative. The eyes have it voted. Can you carry? Good luck to you and thank you for your time. Thank you. This thing is, thank you for coming out and for your time. Um, all right. We are, I believe, at the end of our agenda. The. I mean, Doug, all the public hearings are going ahead and closing the public hearing section and we'll go into the business meeting. The only matter on what the uh. Request modification that has continued. Um, we have the minutes from Gretchen of one ten twenty twenty three. Any comments and changes? Very short.
All right, yeah.
Pretty sure. All right. So we have a motion approved. So all right, and seconded by, uh, Mr. Bennett, most main and seconded, um, and uh. On the motion to approve the minutes, so Mr. Delisle. Yes, Mr. Bennett. Yes, it's checked. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Sixty affirmative, eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Gretchen, for all you do for us. I have no further updates. If anything else, we will, we have a motion to adjourn. So move, seconded all those in favor.
All right, all right. Thank you, guys.